Honourable Mr Graham Dale and Mr Freeman Sir Lawrence, fellow councillors, officers and members of the public, including those listening via the webcast. Welcome to our council meeting this evening. We are not expecting a five room. Therefore, in the event of a fire on, please leave the council chair by the nearest exit and settle the rear of the council car park. I would also like for my members to stand and ensure your mic is fully switched on and please speak clearly into it. When you don't seem pleased, ensure it is fully raised and waited to closing speaker before lowering it. Now, to the agenda. The first item is the election of chairman of the council. Please may have nominations for the chairman of the council for the 2024-25 municipal year. The day proposer and seconded for each nomination, Mr Ross.
I would like to nominate councillor Andrew Brown for the role of chair of the council. I believe that councillor Brown has acted as the most effective and independent chair, ensuring that councillors are heard, our meetings are effectively run. Importantly, he has sought to ensure the appropriate balance between public access to the business of this council and necessary commercial confidentiality in aspects of our decision making. I also consider that he has shown at a quite outstanding level of personal commitment to representing this council in his engagement with the wider range of public bodies and civic events, not just in Rotherham but also in surrounding authorities. All this, and his many other public commitments, I would propose councillor Andrew Brown.
Councillor Ross, second please, down the council panel. Any other nominations? In that case, all those in favour, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, members. I am once again honoured and humbled by the trust and confidence you have placed in me. Rest assured, I will continue to serve this council and this county to the best of my ability and I will continue to work closely with officers and members to get the best out of the meetings. Let's not forget, we are actually on public display here and we have to uphold the reputation of this council. I hope I have done that in the past year. And I look forward to working with you all for another year. Thank you very much. Item two is the election of vice-chairman of the council. Please can I have nominations for the vice-chairmen of the council for the 2024-25 municipal year, the day proposer and seconded for each nomination. Councillor Powell.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to propose councillor Samantha Harley to the post of vice-chair.
Seconded, councillor Stevenson. Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, in that case, all those in favour of councillor Harley, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Okay, thank you councillor Harley. It's duly appointed. Would you like to say a few words to councillor Paulie?
Thank you and thank you very much, members. I do apologise, Chair, okay already. Just testing you. One thing, I've had a really good year and it's very different actually to be vice-chair of the council. It's a different role actually from a cabinet member or from a normal member. And I think one of the biggest things that I've found is actually the representation really does matter. And it's not so much for people my age. What I have been really surprised about is the amount of ladies of slightly older than me, from a different generation, who are actually really, really proud that I'm vice-chair of the council. And I've been really surprised by the people that have taken time out, people that I wouldn't necessarily think could even say it. So for that reason, I think it's really, really good that the representation is there. So I'd like to thank you all.
If you're councillor Harley, congratulations. Do you need to sign off?
No, I can do all.
Item three, apologies for absence. Any apologies this evening, please?
Number six, chairman of the board castings voting, 27.
Okay, item four, chairman's announcements. Under myself, the vice-chairman attended the following events since the last ordinary meeting of council: Oakham Town Council's 50th anniversary at Victoria Hall, High Sheriff's declaration at Oakham Castle, unveiling of the statue of Her Majesty Queen as the second, Leicestershire Fire and Rescue Awards evening at King Power Stadium and the visit to Rutland of the Royal Vicees, the Duke and Duchess of Edinburgh to Oakham Castle. Item five, announcements from the leader, members of the Cabinet and the play service. Leader, would you like to address the council?
I have provided our part with my announcements for this evening in order they can be circulated within minutes. Thank you.
Councillor Waller. Item six is declarations of interest. Do you have any declarations of interest this evening? Look. Okay, item seven, notification by the leader of appointments to the executive. Councillor Waller, can you provide council with the appointments of members of the executive, including the deputy leader?
Thank you. The appointed cabinet members in their portfolios are unchanged from the last reshuffle I undertook in January this year and have been circulated in the agenda supplement shared with you last week. The deputy leader will continue to be councillor Johnson. The delegation of decision-making continues to be to Cabinet to make decisions as a whole, set out in Cabinet Procedure Rules at part four of the Constitution.
Councillor Waller's appointments are noted. Item eight, updates to the Constitution, this is pages 5 to 248 of your packs, report number 41/2024. Members will note that the covering report explains exactly which parts of the Constitution are supposed to change and sets out what is in the appendices. And I invite councillor Johnson to introduce the report and raise the motion. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to introduce this report, which presents several updates to the Constitution for council's approval. The recommendations are as set out in power up 1.2. Members will be familiar with the Constitution and will understand that the council has a duty to maintain the Constitution in order to keep it up to date. The Constitution Commission has been consulted throughout the year on all substantive changes to the Constitution proposed in this report and were supportive of all changes. I don't intend to go through all the changes proposed in detail, as members will have read the paper. In summary, the proposed updates to the Constitution are firstly, the scheme of delegation, which can be found in appendix B, and secondly, the change in the designation of the Constitution Commission to a working agreement, the terms of which can be found in appendix G. There are other changes to the planning and licensing committee, deadlines for public deputations, an updated planning code for practice, the members' scheme of allowances and the contract procedure rules. Within appendix F, the contract procedure rules, it is important to note the changes to section 10, where we are moving to a principles-based approach rather than a defined requirement or extending levels of clarity. The council needs to simplify its systems and procedures in order to engage successfully with the transformation agenda and become more efficient. It is important to note that these changes are not intended to remove the involvement of the portfolio holder. All the changes proposed were reviewed and approved by the Constitution Committee for its commission, which is a cross-party group. I move the recommendations in power up 1.2.
Councillor Johnson, seconded. Councillor Waller. And members within two debates. Mr Stevenson.
Thank you, Chair. It's just one observation and it's a point that I've been making for seven years. I was very pleased to see that there was the removal of a cap on expenses for childcare. Everything else, there wasn't a cap apart from childcare, which I felt potentially made it more difficult for people with caring responsibilities to be councillors. So I was very pleased to see that because I believe I have repeated myself over the years on that one. So that was good to see. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Stevenson. You're the members. Councillor Powell.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, if I may, that it's under contract procedure rules, councillor Johnson. It's highlighted under 3.6.2.2 that the change means that procurement for the value of over £1 million will now be brought to council to approve. I was part of the Constitution Commission and we have indeed debated these at length and fully understood the implications. I just wanted, as I understand it, the confirmation is also the... This principle-based approach means that the items that previously came to Cabinet for approval, over £50,000, will no longer be going down that route either on this new approach. Could you just confirm that's also the case, as well as the threshold of the council having been changed? Thank you.
Councillor Powell, do you want to do that, or you'll say it again, councillor Johnson? Councillor Raymond, thank you. I see you in case. Obviously not.
Somebody's broken my arm.
Councillor Hemsey.
Thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate this is helping streamline running business, but I would hope that the leader will persuade all portfolio holders to keep this chamber updated in a suitable manner so that we understand what's going on behind this scenes.
Councillor Hemsey. The members. In that case, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, to respond to councillor Powell's point, yes, there is a removal of an absolute obligation to bring items to Cabinet, but it's not intended that portfolio holders are kept in the dark, nor is it intended that officers will do things without consulting Cabinet members. So I think what we're trying to do is allow officers to have a degree of common sense when it comes to occupying time with these things. They're already going through a very exhaustive process of procurement. And as councillor Powell will be aware, we debated some of these things on the Constitution Commission. And the key thing here is to free up time for both Cabinet and the council and also to smooth and streamline procurement processes so they're not overburdened with administration.
Does that conclusion sound something like the councillor Johnson?
Yes, I think that's right.
Okay, in that case, the motion is that council approves the recommendations as set out in section 1.2 of report number 41/2024. Those in favour, please raise your hand.
I believe that's 25, chairman.
Those against?
Good, chairman.
So no objection. Okay, in that case, the motion is approved. Item nine, fiscal balance and allocation of seats to political groups, pages 249 to 256 in your packs. Decision report number 42/2024. Members will be aware that the data appendix has been circulated by the agenda supplement. Councillor Johnson, you introduce the report and propose the first four and the sixth recommendation.
Thank you, chairman. This report requests decisions by council as required at the annual meeting. These are the political balance calculations, allocations of seats to political groups and the appointments of chairs on these committees. The political balance calculation, which we are required to make sure we allocate seats proportionally, has changed due to the addition of one member to the independent group. The leaders of the groups have been involved in the discussions and the situation is now as follows. The Liberal Democrat and Green group has 12 councillors. The Independent group has seven councillors. The Conservative group has six councillors and the Labour group has two councillors. This means that the Liberal Democrat and Green group have 46% of the seats, or 90. The Independent group have 26% of the seats, or 11. The Conservative group have 22% of the seats, or 9. And the Labour group have 8% of the seats, or 3. The licensing committee is not included in the 42 seats for political balance purposes. The recommendations are as detailed at 1.2, items 1 to 6. The initial motion will be on items 4 and item 6. Chairs of the committees will then be conferred subsequently. I move the recommendations 1 to 4 and 6.
So I'm seconded. Councillor Waller. Okay, members, open to debate. In that case, the motion is that the council approves recommendations 1 to 4 and 6 as listed in section 1.2 of report number 42/2024. Those in favour, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Okay, thank you. The motion is approved. With regard to the chairs, I will take each committee and ask for its order and I will ask for a proposer and a seconded for each nomination. Take a vote on each body and then proceed to the next committee. So first is the audit and risk committee. Can I have a proposer for each nomination, councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to propose councillor Karen Payne as chair of audit and risk.
Seconded, councillor Ross. Any other nominations? In that case, all those in favour, councillor Karen Payne, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Okay, so councillor Payne is duly appointed. Next is the conduct committee. Can I have a proposer for each nomination? Councillor Powell.
I'd like to propose councillor Oliver Head to be chair of conduct committee.
Seconded. Councillor Corby. Any other nominations? In that case, all those in favour of councillor Hemsey, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Councillor Hemsey is duly appointed. Next is the employment and appeals committee. A proposer and a seconded for each nomination, please. Councillor Powell.
I'd like to propose councillor Samantha Harley as chair of the employment and appeals committee.
Seconded, please. Councillor Carr. Any other nominations? In that case, and those in favour of councillor Harvey, please raise your hand.
I guess, honourable chairman.
Okay, councillor Harvey is duly appointed. Next is the licensing committee. A proposer and a seconded, please, for each nomination. Councillor Powell.
Me again. I'd like to propose councillor Nick Beckett, chair of the licensing committee.
Seconded, please. Councillor Wise. Any other nominations? Those in favour of councillor Beckett, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Councillor Beckett is duly appointed. Next is the planning committee. Can I have a proposer for each nomination? Councillor Powell.
I might propose councillor Nick Beckett, chair of planning committee.
And a seconded. Councillor Smith. Any other nominations? Those in favour of councillor Beckett, please raise your hand.
That's the honourable chairman.
Okay, councillor Beckett is duly appointed. Last is the strategic overview on scrutiny committee. Can I have a proposer and a seconded for each nomination, please? Councillor McGraw.
I'd like to propose councillor Ross.
Thank you. Seconded, please. Councillor Payne. Any other nominations? Councillor Powell.
I'd like to propose councillor Lucy Stevenson.
Seconded, please. Councillor Karen Payne. Any other nominations? Okay, would the candidates like to say a brief few words before we take a vote? If that is a yes, then I will do it in alphabetical order. So I believe Ross comes before Stevenson in the alphabet. So councillor Ross.
You're correct.
Thank you. You can make your first.
I studied here a year ago and said that I believe my background in business and indeed charities would be useful to the workings of the committee and I still believe that to be true. But I've also learned about very different procedures and practices associated with council meetings and have attended a number of courses too here to improve my familiarity with the workings of scrutiny. So I believe I will be a more effective chair of elected. In the year just gone by, I also like to think that I've tried to encourage all committee members to participate and I believe that we operate effectively as a team. So far as Leicestershire and Rotherham Health scrutiny is concerned, I have engaged actively in both agenda setting and questioning. If I unfortunately not be re-elected, I will secretly encourage committee members to consider placing a greater emphasis on the areas of social care and health in the year ahead to provide a more balanced range of work from the consolidated committee structure as provided today. I would also ask councillors who are not members of the committee to consider bringing forward proposals of possible inclusion in the forward work plan. There is never enough legal ideas and all proposals need to be welcomed. Thank you.
Councillor Ross, Mr Stevenson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Members, you'll be aware that I have many passions in my life. Rutland, Rotherham County Council, scrutiny over the years, but most importantly, my passion is around residents, the residents that we seek to serve in this county. All of you will have had induction training about the role of scrutiny. You have heard scrutiny being spoken of as the critical friend to the executive, to influence decisions, to centre check, to think about accountability. We work within the context of corporate strategy. We work within the context of our budget. There are statutory obligations with scrutiny. However, if you choose to elect me as your chair, my focus will be on how we engage our residents with that. It's part of our work improvement plan for scrutiny. The absence of members of public in our public meetings is to be noted. We need to make sure that members of our public are aware of all our constitutional functions. It is not a case of Rutland residents being done to, rather than Rutland residents doing with us. I would like to think that the flood evidence panel is an absolute case study of that. We had a special council meeting because residents were concerned. Scrutiny established the flood evidence panel, which I chaired. We are in the process of drawing together all of the evidence that we got from our residents, from our officers, from external agencies. I am quietly confident, without predetermining our final report, there will be recommendations that are deliverable, that are affordable, but most importantly, will have a positive impact for our residents. It is our scrutiny, it will be as good as we make it. I would absolutely relish the opportunity to work hard, really delivering on that improvement programme and I will be grateful for your support this evening. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Stevenson. All those in favour of councillor Ross, please raise your hand.
14, Chair.
Those in favour of councillor Stevenson?
13, Chair.
So councillor Ross is duly appointed. Item 10, program of meetings, pages 257 to 263 in your pack. Decision report number 43/2024. Councillor Johnson, would you like to introduce the report and raise the motion?
Thank you, chairman. This report presents the program of meetings for 2024-25, the council's approval. The recommendations are as detailed at power up 1.2. The reason for this is that council is required at this annual meeting to agree the dates and time of ordinary meetings of council and its committees for the coming municipal year. This year's program can be seen in appendix A. The setting of dates into May and June 2025 provides greater transparency for members, officers and members of the public on future meeting dates and assists with agenda planning. The main change in this year's program is that council meeting will be held on a Thursday from September onwards. This is primarily to allow officers the time to deal with the large number of queries that generally arise prior to a council meeting. The Constitution Commission have been fully involved in the shaping of this year's program. I move the recommendations at 1.2.
Councillor Johnson, seconded. Councillor Waller, too. Open to debate, members. In that case, the motion is that council approves the recommendations set out in section 1.2... Sorry, councillor Johnson, I was asking for the summer, but it seems we haven't had a debate.
I'll deny myself the opportunity.
Okay. So the motion is that council approves the recommendations set out in section 1.2 of report number 43/2024. Those in favour?
That's the honourable chairman.
Thank you. The motion is therefore approved. Item 11, appointments to outside bodies, 2024-25, pages 263 to 274. Decision report number 43/2024. I assume that should be 2023. Yes, yeah, so it's number 44/2024. Councillor Johnson, would you like to introduce the report and raise the motion?
Thank you, chairman. This report seeks council approval for the appointment of elected members as the council's representatives on a number of outside bodies. The recommendations are as detailed at 1.2. The appointment of members to outside bodies is a matter for council to approve. Bodies set out in appendix A still wish for member representation and appointing them to them will positively contribute to the council's relations with these bodies and ensure that council interests are represented. Each year, the council is required to appoint elected members to represent the council on outside bodies as well as external bodies. The list includes internal council working groups that sit outside the council's own decision-making structures. I wish I'd changed that sentence. Since the last consideration of the matter by council in May 2023, some changes have taken place. Two bodies have amended their arrangements and no longer require appointing member representation. These are no longer included in appendix A. Council membership of two new bodies hosted by Leicestershire County Council were approved by Cabinet in September 2023 and these bodies are now included in appendix A. Council could choose not to appoint the individuals listed, but this is not recommended for the reasons just stated. I move the recommendations as detailed in 1.2.
Councillor Johnson, seconded. Mr Ellison. Members, open to debate. Councillor Powell.
Thank you. Very happy and I think it's really important that representatives of this council are represented on these bodies. We have discussed it, but it was just disappointing to note that whereas we previously had champions who looked after children, considering the motion that went through council last time or the time before, that we no longer have that appointment. Thank you.
Councillor Powell. Councillor Waller.
Thank you. I'll speak now given that councillor Powell has raised this issue. The appointment of champions are at the total discretion of the leader of the council, in terms of who they are.
in terms of who they are. The, we have had two for the last more than one year. The Armed Forces Champion and the Children's Champion. The Armed Forces Champion is an expectation of the Armed Forces Covenant that we are signed up to, and I am extremely pleased to announce that Counselor David Willby is prepared to carry on in the role, and I am more than happy to appoint him. So thank you, David. I think you are an excellent choice for this Council. As far as the Children's Champion is concerned, looking after and protecting children and young people is one of the most important tasks for which Councils are responsible. When a child, for whatever reason, can't safely stay at home, it's up to us as the local authority to step in and give them the care, support and stability that they need. The Council and all elected members as corporate parents are required to give our children-in-care and care leaders the same opportunities that all children should experience who live at their birth or extended families, and have the same aspirations and interest in their progress as any parent would have for their own child. All elected members are corporate parents, and it's the role of each and every elected member to be a champion for the children in our care. It is not the sole remit of a single-member champion or indeed the lead member. It's for these reasons that I'm not appointing to the role of children-in-care and care leaders' champion. We are embarking on a review of our corporate parenting strategy, and this review is being led by our children and young people, and it will inform the future corporate parenting approach in Rotherham. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Waller. The members, Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, Chair. Just picking up on that, I would hope that all of us also signed up to the Armed Forces Covenant, not just one person as the champion. Could I ask the Leader, when the young people, obviously they are leading that review, what their view is of having a named person that can be called upon, noting our role as corporate parenting, not a one-for-the-portfolio holder, like Counselor Powell. I also think it's a shame that we don't have a champion.
Counselor Stevenson. Yes, Counselor Waller, then you can, Counselor Harvey.
I would like to show Counselor Stevenson that Counselor Smith and I will put that question to the young people, although knowing the young people, and certainly proper young people, I think if they have a few, they will tell us what we can say.
Counselor Waller, Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Chair. Roy covers, as the previous Children's Champion for four years. I am really, really disappointed. I think specifically the Children's Champion was able to advocate for our young people, specifically in meetings and things and in other ways. I agree completely. We all have a role in corporate parenting. Unfortunately, I would say we've all failed immediately on this because no one stepped forward to become the other member of the corporate parenting board. So that in itself shows how much it's taken seriously. I would argue.
Counselor Harvey. The other members. In that case, Counselor Johnson, you see this sum?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say that we've obviously now dealt with the issue of champions, and Counselor Waller has indicated the reasons why we won't be appointing a Children's in-care and care leaders' champion this year, and has reaffirmed the fact that we will be appointing an Armed Forces Champion. I think that's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. The motion is that the Council approves the recommendations as set out in Section one point two of Report number forty-four stroke twenty-two. Those in favour, please raise your hand.
Twenty-five, Chair.
Those against?
Two, Chair.
No extensions. The voted motion is duly carried. I'm just about to echo what the Leader has said, that highly decorated servicemen such as Counselor Willby is an excellent choice for the Armed Forces Champion. So thank you for continuing to do that, Counselor Willby. Item four, is any other urgent business? I have not been made aware of any other urgent business to consideration. Counselor Thursday has stated next meeting, because the next council meeting will be Monday, July fifteenth. That concludes the business meeting. Thank you to our Henry Oldman and Freeman for attending, and those who joined us this evening and are listening in, and I'm sure this council meeting closed at.